Happy Birthday.
Good morning. I'll call to order the Dakota County Board of Commissioners meeting for today, September 23rd, 2025. We will start first with a, uh, um, we'll do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Workman?
Here.
Commissioner Drossi?
Here.
Commissioner Holberg?
Here.
Commissioner Slavik?
Here.
Commissioner Halverson?
Here.
Commissioner Hayman Rowland?
Here.
Commissioner Atkins?
Here.
Thank you, and if you are able, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome. Today, we're going to start out by going out into the audience. If there's anyone wishing to address the county board on an item not on the agenda, they may come forward at this time. Their comments are limited to five minutes. We also gave the opportunity for email or Zoom options. I don't believe we have any emails or Zoom.
No comments online.
No comments online, but we do have a speaker who would like to come up. So, Mike Lavin, if you want to come up, you have five minutes to address the board. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mike Lavin, and I just wanted to come here today to introduce myself as the new president of DARTS. And I've been on the job for about 100 days now, so I'm learning a lot. And I appreciate everyone that has taken me under their wing and shown me the ropes here going forward. But I do want to say that I do appreciate the county's commitment to creating connections for our aging population. It is so important. There's one thing I learned very quickly when I started was that we all age. And we're going to continue to have that aging take place in our communities going forward. DARTS is, plays such a critical role with our aging population, and it's such an important role for us going forward. It's helping to keep our aging population living independently. We're doing our home services, which is cleaning our units, independent living units. We're doing the home chores to keep their yards and all of that up to date so that they can stay independent. We're also making sure that they have healthy aging guidance. So when it comes to that time where they do need assistance, they have another resource to reach out to, to provide that help going forward. And then we also provide caregiving support. And when those families are afflicted with dementia or Alzheimer's, we are providing that help in a caregiving support way. And then, one of our big things that we got started for is transportation. Making sure that we're filling the gaps where there is transportation needed throughout the county so that our aging population has the ability to go to their medical appointments and other areas that they need to stay in that independent living. So, I just wanted to take some time to introduce myself. I am reaching out to all of you to hopefully learn more about your district needs and how I can, and how DARTS can help moving forward with our aging population. So, I appreciate it, and thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Well, thank you, Mike. Thanks for being here, and we appreciate the great partnership we have with DARTS as well, and look to do that for many years in the future. So, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
With that, we are going to move on to the agenda. What are the wishes of the board?
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hayman Rowland. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Commissioner Drossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Slavik?
Yes.
Commissioner Halverson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayman Rowland?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Workman?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a couple of public hearings on our agenda today, starting with 5.1, which is the Public Hearing to Receive Comments and Approval of the Dakota County Program Year 2024 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. We have Emily Anderson, Assistant Director of Community Economic Development, here from the Community Development Agency. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioners, for your time. I'm excited to tell you about our accomplishments this year for our federal entitlement programming. So, just to kind of go over what I'm presenting about today, we finished our paper, which is a consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. So, it's the year-end report that details how federal entitlement grants were spent in the previous year, which starts on July 1st and ends the following June 30th. The federal grants are the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investments Partnership Grant, and Emergency Solutions Grant. So, the paper must be submitted to HUD 90 days after the program year, which for Dakota County is September 28th. So, in order to receive federal funds for the CDVG home and ESD programs, HUD requires the county to adopt a five-year consolidated plan, which we just did this year for 2025 through 2029, hold an annual public hearing, and adopt a one-year action plan. And we have to hold a public hearing and provide the annual paper. So, this paper is for year five of the five-year plan for program years 2020 through 2024. These were the five, or sorry, seven. These were the seven priority areas listed in the 2020 through 2024 consolidated plan, and the entitlement funding that the county received for program years 2024, shown on the bar chart, the spend on activities that supported the seven priorities. Not all of the 2024 funds were spent in that year. Some projects take a couple of years to complete and will use that funding source from various years. In addition to our entitlement funds that we receive every year, the county also receives special allocations of CDVG in 2020 to help prepare for, prevent, and respond to the coronavirus. These funds came from the CARES Act and are subject to the same rules as the regular entitlement funds, but must have a clear tie to the COVID-19 pandemic. The county received about 2.9 million in CDVG CV funds. These funds are also reported in the 2024 paper and must support the priorities in the consolidated plan. The CBGCV grant was fully spent in 2024. I will now briefly highlight some of the activities that were completed this year that addressed the priorities and helped the county meet its goals in the consolidated plan. More details can be found in the executive summary attached to the RBA. So, under the priority of reducing homelessness, the county assisted eight homeless individuals with ESG funds for rapid rehousing and 14 households with homelessness prevention. The funding went towards rental assistance, damaged deposits, and first month rent. The county also assisted 232 people with emergency shelter. The consolidated plan had two priorities to support affordable housing. Activities that support affordable homeowner housing included the CDA's homeowner rehab program, which rehabbed 64 homes in Dakota County in this past program year. The photos on the left show the before and after for one of these homes. The home program supported two new construction Twin Cities Habitat for Humanity homes in Farmington and the rehabilitation of six Section 18 homes throughout Dakota County. This year, we also completed the Horizon Heights Rehabilitation Project in Burnsville. CDVG was used to rehab 25 townhome units that are income restricted to those earning 50% AMI or less. Over the last year, the cities and the counties spent 300, or around $300,000 of CDVG entitlement funds on public services that focused on seniors or low-income youth as well, including a great partnership with DARTS, so it's nice to hear from them today. And the CDVG CV funds were used to assist eligible, or income-eligible homeowners that needed help with housing expenses due to COVID transportation for seniors and food banks providing assistance to food insecure Dakota County residents. Again, these funds were fully spent this year. The primary activities in the neighborhood revitalization priority are the well sealing and septic repair programs run through county environmental services and the Hastings Assessment Abatement Program run with the city of Hastings. This past year, 20 obsolete wells were filled, two septic repairs occurred, and five low-to-moderate income households in Hastings received full assessment abatement. The public hearing notice and public comment period notice were published in September 5th in the Star Tribune. The draft paper was also on the CDA's website so that anyone from the public could review and comment on it. We have not received any public comments on last year's activities. And with that, Mr. Chair, we are asking that you hold the public hearing on the 2024 paper and authorize its dismissal to HUD, and I'm more than happy to stand for any questions.
Before we, thank you very much for the presentation. Before we open up the public hearing, are there any questions from the board? I'm not seeing any. With that, we'll open up the public hearing. Are there anyone from the audience who wishes to address on this topic? Secondly, nobody from the online went and requested?
No comments online.
And last time, is there anybody from the audience that would like to speak on this topic? If not, I will declare the public hearing closed. And with that, what are the wishes of the board?
I'll move the motion.
The resolution has been moved by Commissioner Drossi. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any further discussion on this item? I'm seen and hearing none. With that, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Slavik?
Yes.
Commissioner Halverson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayman Rowland?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Workman?
Yes.
Commissioner Drossi?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries. Thank you so much, Emily, for the presentation. With that, we're going to move on to Public Hearing 5.2, a little unique in a situation. I don't think it's happened anytime in my years as county commissioner. But we're going to have a public hearing to receive comments on and approval of a variance to Dakota County Ordinance 113 Subsurface Sewage Treatment Systems for Property Lines and Structures at 29715 Gerlock Way, Cannon Falls, Minnesota. We have Benjamin Hoyt here. Welcome to the meeting.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners?
Yes.
A property owner, unlike Philsby, in Randolph Township is requesting a variance from the county's septic system ordinance. I'll briefly go over the ordinance, setbacks and site conditions, a map of the site, and variance process. The septic system ordinance is in place to protect public health and the environment, and a variance is required to be approved by the board. The associated setbacks are 10 feet to property lines, 20 feet to structures, 50 feet to wells, and 75 feet to the lake. When you put all of these setbacks onto the map, it shows how difficult it is to site a new septic system. By prioritizing setbacks to wells and to the lake to protect public health and the environment, the setbacks to the township road and the homeowner's garage remain. A variance of one foot instead of 10 feet to township road and four feet instead of 20 feet to the homeowner's garage will allow a septic system to be installed. As required, we have notified state agencies, Randolph Township, all property owners within 500 feet, and posted public notice in the official county newspaper. No comments or questions were received. This is a straightforward request. Staff recommends approval, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions from the board? If not, I'll open up the public hearing. And is there anybody in the audience wishing to address the board? I don't believe there are any comments from agencies or related to this public hearing or the public. And last time, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the board on this topic? I'm seen and hearing none, so I will close the public hearing. And what are the wishes of the board?
I'll move the motion, Mr. Chair.
The motion has been moved, resolution has been moved by Commissioner Drossi. Is there a second to this?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Halverson. Seeing no discussion, please call the roll.
Commissioner Slavik?
Yes.
Commissioner Halverson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayman Rowland?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Workman?
Yes.
Commissioner Drossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Benjamin. Appreciate it. All right. With that, we are going to move on to the consent agenda, which is Item 6.1, the minutes of the September 9th, 2025 meeting, and Item 7.1 to 10.1. And what are the wishes of the board? Any corrections, solutions, removals?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hayman Rowland. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Commissioner Halverson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayman Rowland?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Workman?
Yes.
Commissioner Drossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Slavik?
Yes. Thank you. With that, we move on to the regular agenda, Item 11.1. Under Central Operations and Finance, we have the adoption of the 2026 Certified Dakota County Maximum Proposed Levy. We have our Finance Director, Will Wallow, here with the presentation. Welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Chair Slavik, Commissioners. Will Wallow, Finance Director at Dakota County. I'm here this morning to present on the adoption of the maximum proposed property tax levy for 2026. This slide just shows the agenda of the presentation this morning. A lot of the slides that we're going to be going through are slides you've seen at previous budget workshops. We'll just be reiterating what we talked about at those workshops. There's a few new slides. We'll be talking about some potholes that we're looking to fill in 2026. And then we'll be also looking at property tax impacts of the recommended proposed levy for 2026. So, first slide that we'll start off with here is the recommendation for the maximum levy for 2026. We are recommending a 9.9% increase from 2025 for a recommended maximum levy of $184,246,066 in 2026. As you've seen at our prior budget workshop last Tuesday, our baseline projected cost increases for 2026 due to both internal cost pressures and then also increases from cost shifts from the state and federal government, combined with $8.3 million in reductions that staff have identified in levy-funded programs and services resulted in an increase of 8.1% for 2026. However, and on this next slide, you can see we have the anticipated increases in state and federal cost shifts in 2026. And through 2030 and 2027, we see the SNAP program. We're looking at administrative costs being shifted onto the county along with the potential implementation of additional staffing for Medicaid work requirements from the recent one big beautiful bill act. And then in 2028 and 2030, additional cost shifts occurring. So, this next slide shows the reductions, that $8.3 million in cuts that I mentioned on the previous slide. This was after factoring in the things that were taken off of the reductions list at the July 23rd workshop, and then staff recommendations of both the August 19th and previous last week, September 16th meetings, for a total of $8.3 million in reductions to the levy, $8.8 million of cuts in total, and a reduction of 44.3 FTEs across the organization. So, why staff are recommending a 9.9% levy increase as opposed to an 8.1% levy increase to cover operating costs are due to the county's current financial position. So, as you can see on this slide, as we talked about at last week's workshop, the county's fund balance over the past five years has gone down fairly significantly, about $136 million over that period. A large proportion of that decrease has been, has occurred in the general fund, which is where most of the levy and most of the operating costs for the county are accounted for. As you can see on this slide, which we discussed at last week's workshop, the general fund, along with a number of other funds the county is in, what's called a structural deficit, or ongoing expenditures each year in the adopted budget have exceeded ongoing revenues, which is one of the factors that has resulted in the decrease in fund balance for the county. The proposal this year helps narrow that gap a little bit, and we'll talk about the items that are ongoing expenditures that the increase of 1.8% additional levy would cover. So, this list right here is what we've been calling potholes, but things that are funded by fund balance that are ongoing expenditures. I'm not going to go through every single item on this list, but a couple of high-profile items are our IT capital equipment program. Every piece of hardware, you know, laptop, technology device that the county pays for is currently coming out of general fund fund balance. We also have a number of ongoing expenditures related to insurance contracts, which are year-to-year contracts, which will be perpetually ongoing, which are being currently funded by fund balance. But if we increase the levy to 9.9%, roughly $3 million will go towards funding these ongoing expenditures. So, this next slide, which you've seen before, is just the five-year forecast of projected current growth in our own internal services, combined with the cost pressures placed on the county by the state and federal government. And then now, we are looking at also adding additional money onto the levy for what we're calling a structural deficit reduction plan to help improve the financial position of the county. This next slide, just to fix that visually, showing that this year, we're looking at a 9.9% levy increase. Next year, we are currently forecasting an 11.7% levy increase due to primarily cuts and cost shifts from the state and federal government. We continue to see that in 2028, before that starts to subside in 29 and 30, where we look at picking back up with the structural deficit reduction plan and putting more levy funds into those items which are currently paid for out of fund balance. So, to address some of the county's financial challenges, we've put together a high-level roadmap for how we are going to start addressing these issues. We're currently in phase one. As part of this, we'll be coming back to the board regularly for discussions on things such as the fund balance of all the county's funds, looking at fund balance policies and procedures. We'll also be evaluating between now and the December 2nd budget hearing any potential other cuts or reductions to items that are currently being paid out of general fund fund balance. So, you'll be hearing from us more repeatedly, and ultimately, the goal of this is to create a long-term financial management plan that puts the county back on a sustainable financial trajectory. This next slide just shows a comparison of other counties' preliminary 2026 levy increases. As you can see, by and large, most of the counties who were looking at this as a comparison group are also experiencing some of the same pressures that Dakota County is from the state and federal government. And because of that, are looking at levy increases higher in 2026 than what the increases were in 2025. Next, we'll talk about property tax impacts, and these were also provided to commissioners in emails last Thursday. But for a median residential homestead in the county, the county property tax change as a result of this 9.9% levy increase will be about $66.11 next year. This next slide, which again was sent out last week, shows what the impact looks like on a median value of residential homestead in every city and township throughout the county. So, to conclude, I'll just reiterate, our recommended action before you today is adoption of the 2026 Certified Dakota County Maximum Property Tax Levy of $184,246,066 for 2026. We will be coming back for a couple of budget items in the next couple of months. We'll be back in November to receive feedback on the CIP. As I mentioned, we'll have the December 2nd Budget and Levy Former Notice of Truth in Taxation Meeting, and then adoption of the 2026 Budget and Property Tax Levy on December 16th. And as I reiterated, as we continue to go through this financial management roadmap, we will possibly be setting up additional budget workshops as well to get more into the weeds of some of the other funds, because we've only highlighted the general fund so far. So, with that, I will conclude my presentation and turn it over to the board for discussion.
Thank you very much, Will. Appreciate that. With that, I'm going to pass it right to our county manager first.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, just one more item I wanted to make sure that you knew. Last week, when we talked about this, we said we would go through line by line everything that's funded in that reserves, by reserves, and we did, we are doing that. So, when we come back to, in December, maybe in November?
November.
In November, we will have additional recommended cuts of items that are currently funded by those reserves. We're just trying to close that gap as much as we can. Some things that we found in there that we thought we can change, though, we can, we can make some cuts. Snips, more of snips than make cuts, but wanted to let you know, we are also working on that.
Thank you very much, county manager. With that, open up for discussion, comments, or a motion from anyone? Just, yeah, Commissioner Halverson, thank you.
This feels like something that deserves discussion. Really, what I want to highlight, especially for the public, is how much work has been done on this budget. I think that every year, we feel like we start a little earlier having these conversations. And behind the scenes, what's going on is a lot, a flurry of activity, particularly with division directors looking at where we can be leaner in a county that's already extremely lean. And that is, I think, a tougher lift all the time. But I think that our staff really answered that call well, looking for things that have worked and maybe we can graduate from. To me, that is some of the biggest success when we hear, "Well, this project was put in place, and it's been successful, and we can move on from that particular service." Wow. That is what we love to see. And so, I just want to highlight that that is excellent work. This is not a position that county boards want to be in anywhere. These conversations are happening across the state, and we can't underscore enough that we are responding to changes and shifts at the state and federal level. I will also say that counties have worked really hard to minimize the number of shifts that are coming our way, and things that could have rolled down to us in our transportation budget, in our community services budget by the millions, didn't because we were able to get in front of legislators and stop that action. And so, while it, it's not going to, you're not seeing a ton of conversation up here, I just wanted to give a little glimpse behind the scenes at... I just wanted to give a little glimpse behind the scenes at kind of the year-round work that's happening to manage budget and expenses at the county level. I think that our staff have done a great job. I think that commissioners have done a great job. Our partners at AMC and MICA and other organizations have done a great job at the legislature, and we'll continue to do that work year-round. But that doesn't change the fact that we are in this situation today. But I feel really good about the digging that has been done to put us on a path to right-size the budget. The other thing I can't underscore enough is that we need to be on a path to refill our reserves. You have heard that, Will. Heidi's heard that as well. It was nice to have cash to spend. Those days are over, and what we need to do to be a financially sound county, to keep our AAA bond rating, is to make sure that our reserves are healthy, and they're not right now. And so the focus to do that this year is really important, and it's something that we're going to have to look at in future years. So that is my comments, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holverton, those are well set. Commissioner Hayman-Rolland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I would concur. Thank you, Commissioner Holverton, for that. One of the things that I have spent my time as in leadership focusing on is being able to have our property taxes at a predictable, sustainable level. And over the last years, as we've gone through everything that we've gone through, cuts and shifts from the state and the federal government, pandemic, the challenges that we face, we've had more of a, an opportunity for our property taxes to go up and to go down and/or to lay flat and then go up. I think with our mission now, it is to create that predictable, sustainable, stable level. And I think that we are beginning this, and thank you, Will, for the work and your team that you've done to be able to do that, and all the directors. It's hard to do this, and it's a challenge, but we have a responsibility to the now and to the future. So thank you for that.
Others who have comments or questions?
We know we've certainly, I think, at the point of Commissioner Holverton, that this process, from when I started as commissioner, we really would have been kind of at the beginning of our budget process on this day, a decade ago, and now we are coming to a point where we've fine-tuned, I think the board, whether they like it or not, knows what the budget looks like for 2026. I think we know what a maximum levy gets you and doesn't get you. I think we know what the impact of the cuts that have been had to make just to be able to get to this number, what that looks like, what that impacts of that are to the residents, to the businesses, and to our own staff and employees. And I think that, you know, we are at a point where in the past, we kind of picked a number and then figured out a budget that worked with that number. And to be able to get to a point where we understand and grasp, even if we don't exactly like where it's at, it gets us to a point, it adds a much improved layer of fiscal responsibility to be able to do it that way. Our challenges don't end because we picked this number. I think that's one thing to certainly be aware of, that when we get to, I mean, that's one of the great things about what was said in that framework was, we're going to be coming back in October, in November, you know, before the truth in taxation, after the truth in taxation, we still have flexibility to make this a better budget and serve our community better in the next three months. This just gives you kind of a point in time that allows you to say, this is where we are, and we're not going to be able to, we didn't create all of the challenges and problems in one year, and we can't fix them in one year. But if we don't start taking some responsibility to move forward with that, it's just going to get worse next year. And I think that's what I appreciate, that staff was able to educate the board more on some of that parts in there. I think it is important to note that, you know, about a third of the conversation we're having on a levy today is our state and federal partners and their increases this year. Let's not talk about what they've done for years and decades and generations that are an impact that really frankly doesn't feel right with unfunded mandates. This is just the new stuff. Next year, in the proposed number, that's over fifty percent of the proposed levy is state and federal pressures and shifts and cuts. Half is what we need to do to run the county. The other half is just what the federal and state government is saying, this is now your responsibility to do this work. So I think that it's important that as we work with our associations to see if there's something that gets figured in there, we haven't even had the conversation of all of the unfunded mandates from generations that counties are already on the hook for, that if you would go to any other county, go across the river and see what Wisconsin has to pay for on some of these services, and the state picks them up, not the counties. So we already are at a different point in here, but we know that sometimes, you know, you're dealt the cards you get, and you have to go in and work with that. So I think that that's where we're at, and it gives me hope and promise because of the great staff we have, and frankly, the great board, that we can do tough things, we can figure things out and get to the point we're at. So I don't like where we're at, but I can only control so many things, and all of us can only control what we have any say in. And so I just want to express my appreciation for getting us to where we are today, whatever may happen. So with that, any other comments? Otherwise, we do have a staff recommendation, a county manager recommendation that we discussed at the board budget meeting last week. Is there anyone who wishes to make that motion or a different motion?
I'll move.
It's been, that motion has been moved by Commissioner Drosty. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second to that. One last chance for any conversation and discussion. Commissioner Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Will, and everybody in finance, Heidi, everybody that contributed from all the departments and divisions, I appreciate all the work that got us to this, to this point. I had a quick question, and I think my number is accurate. In order, what is the figure that Dakota County would need to increase our property taxes by? And yet, what is the maximum figure, and yet still remain the lowest tax, property tax per capita of any county in Minnesota?
Of any?
Chair, Commissioner Atkins. When we were looking at that back in July, you know, holding all else equal, so not anticipating other counties increasing their property tax levy, the number was thirty-one percent to catch up to Anoka County on a per capita basis.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, and Will, I do not intend to support a thirty-one percent in property tax, but I think it bears noting that our predecessors have done a hell of a job, dating back literally decades, on constraining the levy as much as possible. This is, this is a more difficult period of time. We've obviously got some external pressures that we, you know, don't have any control over, that are driving some of these numbers. And I came in fully prepared, you know, we've, as Chair Slavik and others have noted, we've been at this for months, and I was convinced that that figure that the staff recommended was the number that we needed to support today and was prepared to vote yes for it. What pulled the rug out from under me a little bit was there'd been some changes in the capital improvement program that had been proposed, that came up since August 19th, when we last had the discussion. Some projects got moved up. There was a Lakeville Road project, for example, that got moved up by year. There was, but many projects got either moved back or eliminated altogether. And for me, this is just like my household budget. In fact, I'm more careful with these dollars because they're other people's dollars than I am with my own. And I'm pretty darn frugal, I ask my wife, I'm pretty dang frugal and careful with our own dollars. But in a household budget, you've got the operations, the day-to-day expenses, and then you've got obviously the, what it takes to maintain the home itself, and the yard, and all the things that go along with that. And the significant changes that I saw that were not brought back before this board for further discussion about how we were going to address those, that has caused me some trepidation in supporting the budget today. That being said, I, this is our preliminary levy figure. And after sitting here and listening to my chair and my colleagues, talking to the county manager, talking to the physical development director, and we'll, you know, we'll have some further discussion about the CIP here in a minute, but this is a preliminary figure that we're supporting today. I think it behooves us to have as much flexibility in that figure. So I will somewhat just sort of hold my powder a little bit about yesterday, but I got some real strong concerns about what happened in the CIP. I'll bring those up in the next discussion and look forward to some further discussion about the budget and CIP over the next couple of months. But I didn't want to sit here quietly, vote yes, and you think, everybody think everything was hunky-dory because it ain't. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Atkins. And I think that every one of us who ends up voting yes on this is certainly not overly comfortable with how we're having to do that, but I certainly appreciate you adding some context to some of your begrudging yes, and I appreciate your comments with that. So thank you. Anyone, Commissioner Drosty?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I will say, this is the third year I've been here on budgets, and this is by far the most detailed and clear scope of looking at the status and where we are as a county, and I will be supporting this. And clearly, it's much higher than what I think any of us anticipated even last year when we significantly changed the direction of the county. But I will say, I'm very in tune with where our population's at, seventeen percent on fixed income, our social security, our large percentage of our population where their house payment is beyond what the thirty percent was recommended. And I also realize, all businesses, when you look at, hey, these costs, all businesses are no different than we are, they have to make adjustments also. So it is, again, I applaud staff, the clarity of the data, but I am very cognizant, in the next two, three years, this trend line will not be changing. So the work we have and what staff's been doing, again, I applaud the tough work, but we have more tough decisions before us. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Holverton.
Yeah, I just, as long as Lakeville was called out, I just have to make the point that it's not a levy-funded project.
Thank you, Commissioner Holverton. Any other comments from the board? I am not seeing any. With that, we do have a resolution before us. With that, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hayman-Rolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Workman?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosty?
Yes.
Commissioner Holverton?
No.
Commissioner Slavik?
Yes.
Commissioner Holverton?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion does carry. And with that, we move on to our next agenda item, which is, here it is, thank you. Our next agenda item is item 12.1 under Physical Development Administration, authorization to release the 2026 to 2030 capital improvement program for formal review. We have Erin Sorwa, Physical Development Deputy Director, welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. As you know, this process is a fluid process. It is a very up-to-date process. We're constantly moving numbers and projects around based on our partners and new information we're learning. So today, we want to talk about the authorization to release the draft of the 2026 to 2030 CIP program for formal review. We'll talk about process today, and then we'll give you the overview of the plan. So looking at process, over the last few months, we have been in front of you at a few touchpoints, talking about above and below the line projects. We had some commissioner meetings with you over the summer. We met with the county manager, and then we had a workshop with you back in August where we talked about some of the challenges, some of the projects, how we were planning and preparing for those, and we're here today. Looking ahead, we're looking at another touchpoint in November, whether that be at PDC or another budget meeting that you're having on the operational budget. We'll be back in front of you to talk about any comments we're receiving and any changes as this is kind of a moving target until we get to that December hearing. Then we are at our deadline based on this plan today, by November 7th, to have some comments back, looking at the CIP public hearing on December 2nd, and then the potential adoption at the county board on December 16th. So looking at the five-year summary, the 2026 total plan is at one hundred and forty-six point eight million dollars, and looking at just under nine hundred million for the total five-year CIP. We have several changes that have occurred since we were before you in August, and I'll not walk through each of these individually, but I could certainly, we could certainly touch on them if you'd like. We do have staff in the audience who worked on putting this together. You'll see all of the facilities projects here. These really worked towards just changing the funding source, so that was just a shift based on some conversations. And then several projects had general fund listed and were moved to unfunded based on some of the projections and discussions we had before you last month. Looking at parks changes, there were several new, several pieces of new information we had regarding parks and trails, legacy funding dollars coming in, revenues, so those were changed here. We did remove public art implementation from the plan based on some direction last month. We looked at changing names for a couple of projects based on direction, looking at matching funds and making some adjustments. And then we do have some changes to the greenways plans, as Commissioner Atkins stated. I do want to preface this change for the greenways and the transportation projects that will be in the upcoming slides. We have been firming up our fund balance numbers, looking at what we're bringing in for revenues, looking at what our expenditures are, where we're at today on costs. And we did find out just about a month ago, about a ten million dollar less fund balance, or I'm sorry, last week, a ten million dollar fund balance reduction. So that was going to be as a part of the sales and use tax fund balance. Due to that, we had to reduce the five-year plan for sales and use tax funded projects by that ten million dollars. Now you know our ten-year outlook has always been in the black. Our five-year outlook would have been in the red by ten million dollars. So we did look towards reducing those, starting with the Lebanon Hills Greenway, Lone Oak Road project, moving from 2029 to 2030. And then several segments here, Lebanon Hills Greenway, Vermillion Highlands Greenway, moving from 2028 to 2030, and then four projects moving out of the five-year CIP that were previously funded in 2029 and 2030. And those are Lebanon Hills Greenway, Rosemont Greenway, the Egan-Ember Grove Lebanon Hills Greenway project on Trunk Highway 55 and Cassa 28, and the Lake Marion Greenway at Holy Oak. So those were moved out of the CIP. That does not mean that maybe planning work will not continue to take place, but those construction segments are being moved out at this time. Going into the transportation projects, there are, these ones have, these projects have way more moving targets, I'd say, than any other projects in our capital program. So we did have a lot of construction budgets updated as a part of this process. That is very typical at this stage. We did have a couple of projects added. You'll see the Glacier Way project. We have two additional projects, Allen Way and Cassa 73 at Babcock, construction budgets updated. And then we did have one project completely moved out of the five-year CIP, that is Egan- Ember Grove border pedestrian underpass at Cassa 28, due to the sales and use tax availability. And then looking at Garden View to Hanover and Diamond Path, the And then looking at Garden View to Hanover and Diamond Path, the construction budget updated. And then, um, we have just several phasing changes, um, here. And then you'll see multiple changes to projects, uh, as we plan for the staff time that is used to develop these projects. That tended to be a one-line item in the plan. We decided to go by project. So that adjusted every single project, um, in the transportation CIP. So looking at the total picture for each of the individual CIPs, you'll see data networks. Total CIP for this year, zero. Uh, for the coming year, 2026, at zero, 2026 to 2030, at four point eight million, funded entirely by county funds. The environmental resources CIP totaling one million in 2026 for a total of eight point eight million over the five-year CIP, being funded by the Environmental Legacy Fund in the state. Looking at the facility CIP, which is a total of seventeen point one million in 2026 and one hundred and eighteen point nine million over the entirety of the CIP, being funded by county funds, county debt, transportation, sales tax, and a number of unfunded, uh, projects that are unfunded at this time based on direction. Looking at Parks and Greenways, we have several funding sources here, but a total twenty, uh, total 2026 CIP at twenty-five point three million dollars and a total 2026 to 2030 CIP at two hundred and twelve point seven million. I will not read off all of the funding sources, but we have many funding sources that go into the Parks and Greenways program. Transportation is very similar, total of one hundred and two point nine million dollars for the 2026 CIP and the entirety of the, the five-year CIP at five hundred and forty-eight million, or five hundred and forty-eight point one million dollars with several funding sources. I'm happy to take any questions, um, but just to reiterate, um, there are seven projects that were pushed out um, due to the sales and use tax shift in parks. Four of them were outside of the five-year, three were shifted years, and then one transportation project was shifted. And we have some detail we can provide on that as well if you have additional questions. But I'm happy to take any other questions you may have.
Thank you, Erin. Any comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Hoverson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, um, I have some questions and concerns about process. So, uh, a long, long time ago, we had a conversation about sales and use tax. And, um, the board, uh, at the time, what I recall the direction being is, we don't, so, because we've got another half cent, right? Or quarter cent, quarter cent to go, um, uh, that, uh, we have not leveraged yet. And at the time, the board said, we don't have to do it now because we're flush, we're, um, in the black. And when we are not in the black, we should talk about that and reconsider it. So I'm very, I'm concerned that the conversation is being happened about the cut without talking about how we, um, actually deal with the fund. And I feel like it puts us in a position of, um, uh, having part of the conversation, which frankly, I think we've done a lot over the years, um, and had a conversation about, um, uh, you know, for example, the levy without having the conversation about maintaining our reserves. And so this to me feels the same way. We're, we're also facing, um, a, a lot of risk with the elf fund, and it feels like we're getting a little close to the sun. And I think that we have to, um, have, uh, a more universal discussion about how we are going to maintain these funds in the future. My concern about taking things off or pushing them out, um, once they get out past that five-year mark, putting them back is going to be harder because it's going to start to look like we don't need to have the conversation about SUT. Um, and it's going to impact communities. That little stretch of Lone Oak, um, in, in my district is, is really vital. It's something that, um, as we've, because, um, it's a small stretch of road, but it got a lot of feedback from the neighborhood, I will say. And, uh, adding that connection to, um, the, the Mississippi River Greenway was, uh, a big part of kind of what we've promised that community. And, um, and we can deliver on that if we, um, you know, have a, a bigger conversation than just, um, what we're not going to fund and what we're going to put off. If we, you know, make the decision without talking about how we're fixing the fund, um, that's only part of the conversation. I really want us to come back and have, uh, the whole conversation, um, and do the math. The other thing I'll say about the sales and use tax is, I am so tired of having to defend this at the, at the state when we are one of, is it two counties that haven't, you know? Take, three? Okay. Um, uh, maximize their levy and we're going, or maximize the sales and use tax opportunity, and, uh, we keep asking the state for money, and they're like, well, there's, there's money for you. And, uh, and so, um, it'd be nice to put that to bed too. But I just think we have to have a bigger conversation. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, thank, yes, thank you, Commissioner Hoverson. Uh, Commissioner Atkins? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, George, it wasn't related to that that you want, and then we'll go there.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
So, uh, as Erin described, we, um, we found out that we had ten, uh, ten million dollars less of, uh, sales and use tax than we thought. In order to be, uh, physically responsible and not come into the red for sales and use tax, uh, I directed staff to move those projects. All those projects are still on the SUT list, the, the ten-year list. Um, so we still are, are capturing those on the ten-year list. The issue with, with the sales and use tax, um, isn't that we don't have enough money, it's the cash flow issue. By the end of the five years, we would have been dipping into the red, um, based on what was in the plan. At the end of ten years, which is the list that we give to the state, we're back in the black by about twenty million dollars. So it's all about when the money's here. If we, uh, increase the sales and use tax, we have the option to increase that to about twenty-five million dollars more a year. If we do that, um, which we can, uh, just be aware that that's twenty-five million dollars over five years. It's going to increase us by, do the math, right? It's a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. Now we're going to have a huge balance in SUT again, and that is a problem. Having a balance in SUT is, I'm always told by our attorney, is, this is supposed to be, the money comes in, the money goes out. We should be maintaining this is close to zero. So actually having it close to, uh, within a million dollars of, of the balance is a good place to be. But it also makes the cash flow issue that much more complicated. We had other options, um, you know, I chose to move them and, and have them on the SUT list, that was my direction. Uh, and other options, we could have listed all those as unfunded and leave them in there. As you saw already, the slides that we have, uh, we've got a lot of unfunded things in the out years. That's definitely an option. We could go back and we could take all of those items, put them back in, um, before we release it to the public, and just mark them as unfunded and have that further discussion. But, uh, so that's why, uh, the document looks like it does now. It's because, uh, we, we don't have the money today, but we will by the end of ten years. We'll have more than we need by the end of ten years.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On that topic?
Yeah, on that topic, I just want to, um, it just, I, um, part of my discomfort with this is that I don't know that we've, um, had any, have, had this level of changes come to us before a regular board item on, uh, I would say some high-profile stuff, right? Like things that our communities are asking for, and so to not have a board discussion about this, um, doesn't feel right. I appreciate the, um, frankness, uh, about, you know, the funding deficit that we're, we're looking at and the concerns around that, and the fact that we're going to address it sooner rather than later. And, uh, not, but I, I just, I think that this was a board discussion that needed to happen, and, and it didn't. And, uh, honestly, um, you know, I, I think you guys are really smart and really talented and all those things. It's, um, when it's on our, our neighborhoods and our backyards, I feel like, uh, the stewardship and responsibilities that we have as we talk to people about what's happening. One of the things we talk about the most is what's happening. And in my community, one of the things that people want to talk about the most especially is what's happening around active transportation. Um, and, um, and so I kind of, I, I feel protective of those things. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Atkins?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, I'm just going to start with a question. I got some comments perhaps for later. But my question is, uh, and, you know, I, as you know, I represent, uh, a district where a third of the folks don't have cars. Is, we saw that in the presentation, so they get around on two feet or, or on two wheels, uh, or they call an Uber or something like that. But, uh, most of the CIP changes that came without ever coming to a committee, uh, were ones that are actually in other, um, districts. They're not in mine. The, the one I wanted to just ask you further about is, and I'm guessing Commissioner Drossi will weigh in on it as well. It's actually at Highway fifty-five and County Road sixty-three, AKA Argenta Yankee Doodle. That one was taken out of the CIP altogether. It's a pedestrian safety concern. And, you know, since this has now become sort of our opportunity, uh, can somebody explain to me why that one was removed?
Chair, Commissioner Atkins, yes. We did look at that project, and that project will follow the Argenta four ninety-four interchange. So the first step would be the Argenta four ninety-four interchange, and then the fifty-five sixty-three grade separation would occur. So because that's years out, we, we did feel like, um, it's not on the near-term horizon.
Commissioner Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. Murray, and I'm, I'm glad that I asked because, um, we could be waiting forever for four ninety-four. We don't, because that one is so much out of our hands and requires potentially state and federal, uh, participation, uh, that makes me even more concerned about this particular one. And, and Bill, I'm not trying to jump on your toes here, but I know Councilman Murphy, the mayor, have raised this one multiple times, uh, about how dangerous it is for pedestrians to cross, uh, at fifty-five and Argenta, or Argenta slash Yankee Doodle. And I, maybe I'll stop there, um, hand it off to Commissioner Drossi if he's got questions. Otherwise, I'd, I'd like to talk about it more. We've had fatalities at that intersection, multiple fatalities at that intersection. But I'm going to pause there because I, I, uh, I think I've made the point with respect to that one project, and then I got questions about several others. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Drossi, you on, uh, on that topic?
Since, uh, well aware of it and, uh, areas, but I will say within my district, I have an even higher priority at forty-two in Akron for an underpass with thousands of people living in that quadrant now with, uh, crossing at street level. So, um, that's one thing, uh, at the county, um, stopping and looking at all priorities and risk and current situations, I think, uh, things have changed. I, I think I'm the only one here with an intersection closed because of traffic accidents also, and it still is going to take two years to get, open that up, uh, Biscayne and forty-two. So, um, I realize, yes, this, uh, surprised me, significant changes. And I have many, many other questions, but I realize again, we're adopting this. And as long as I have the floor, I do have a quick question on a separate note. So this is releasing for comments, no, through, to the townships and the cities, uh, by November seventh, correct? And we push this out, we'll communicate that. If residents wanted to comment on this, is there an online place for residents, or is it only the cities and townships?
Chair, Commissioner Drossi, we have had several residents contact us as well. So we put that out for everybody. We're publicly releasing this document as a whole.
On the website, and welcome all comments.
Absolutely. The only group that we do have a physical touchpoint is a letter that goes out to all of our cities. Um, so they know to bring back, cities and townships, to bring back, um, hopefully, a resolution of support from their city councils before the date, so we can provide that to you at the public hearing.
With that, I'm going to pass it back to Commissioner Atkins.
I can, I can hold for if others got, have comments.
I think you got, oh, go, nope, somebody.
I can, I can go.
Sure.
So, um, this is releasing for draft comments. So we're, we will have the opportunity to make modifications. Some of the projects that have been raised as issues, I, I'd like to remind people that, uh, next year will be the first major solicitation on the active transportation dollars, which will be about fifty million. And on top of that, of course, you have the regular regional solicitation dollars as well. So the CIP is changing all the time, given opportunities to fund things. As far as whether they're listed unfunded or pushed off the back, we'll have the opportunity to have that discussion before, uh, final approval. We tend to, um, do okay in solicitations, so there will be something coming. You'll find out in my, uh, update from TAB, some, uh, warning signs for that note. But, I mean, I think the action before us today is to release it for comment. It's not the final deal, and some very good points have been raised that could likely be addressed.
I will add a comment then if, uh, because I know you want to go a little bit more in detail, Joe. The one, I think that very much like I had shared, our budget process has evolved over recent years where we used to get a preliminary target, and then we would do budget workshops between September and December. And that's when we really would draft a budget to, where we've in essence created a budget by today, and now it's a matter of, uh, what's the, where, where's the right point tweaks and such. I think our CIP process, you know, it was only a couple of weeks ago where all of the things that were technically unfunded, we didn't refer to them as unfunded, we referred to them as fund balance. And then we've, we've changed that part there. And I think that this year probably creates a little bit of a hiccup because we, we made it, uh, we made a goalpost change literally a week and a half ago to go from fund balance to, as we had the fund balance conversation, from fund balance to, um, unfunded. And it's a little hard, but I actually think that being consistent this year and pu, and actually being very transparent and actually saying everything was unfunded prior to a, a board discussion on some of this probably was, um, would be probably more appropriate. Is, i- in this part in here, um, I actually really have huge respect and appreciate that staff is trying to look and, and figure out a way to really be the, the steward of the dollars that we, um, that, that we all know and expect. But I think that next year, this won't, won't be the same issue because next year, we'll have everything as unfunded, which is unfunded. And then it's a matter of, it might be in a five-year CIP, uh, capital improvement plan, on the assumption we find a way to pay for it. Uh, if we cannot find a way to pay for it, that is where it becomes the delay. And, um, so I think that your transparency actually improves with this process a year from now, just like our transparency in the budget has, has, uh, will, will happen in that part there. I don't know, so my, my kind of thought with this is, um, if you were asking me, I would actually support the, uh, draft CIP as it was presented today. However, I think that that did not really, that had a staff discussion and not a board discussion. And I feel like as policymakers, the board should be able to, we, we saw everything else. We've had multiple times where we've seen the capital improvement plan, and then the, the changes we never really saw, and they are dramatic enough that my comfort level personally would have been to be similar to release a draft that actually looked, for some of these things that are more kind of, some of the, you know, the, the five, uh, four or five, uh, things related to the sales and use tax, would actually just go and be unfun, keep them in there, put them unfunded. And frankly, as we're going to have conversations, this is a draft that we're proposing, but as I'm understanding from what, uh, our finance director said, there's a number of things in that CIP that we're releasing to the public that may not show up for even twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven, uh, that, we're going to be having that conversation as policymakers to say, you know, one of the ways to close that gap of that deficit that we are running in fund balance is to go and postpone or eliminate this project here. And we're going to be going from staff recommendations to go, just like we did with the budget cuts that we had in July, we're going to go through and see what can be put off for a year, what can maybe be permanently, uh, removed. And that conversation's going to happen, but the policymakers will make that decision. And I think that that's where my, my comfort level is that we, um, though I don't disagree with most of what was recommended, I think that, um, being able to be a little more transparent for this year in that process to, um, which, by the way, probably ends up being exactly where we'll end up in, in, in December when we finalize a, a CIP, I think getting to that point today where those projects are in, in December when we finalize a CIP, I think getting to that point today where those projects are actually still in a CIP as we saw a couple of weeks ago, but show up as unfunded. And then we make, maybe actually with that CIP would have had something that actually is a little clearer. That talks about these projects that are unfunded may not happen within the capital improvement plan unless funding becomes available. And that actually, and maybe that's in really big bold letters. Because I think that that is, is the part is if, if a revenue stream increases and all of a sudden we can put those Greenway projects back in. I don't think that anyone, including staff, would disagree with that. It's just a, the fact of the matter is if you show it as unfunded and then funding becomes available, whether that be a state or federal grant, whether maybe that's a, a local business that wants to write the check. We've had that happen in certain parts that have reduced a cost. Wonderful. We should take every opportunity we can. But for the purposes of this draft, I don't, I think it's a little, it's not as genuine as it could be to go and just remove things when we have other parts of this where we just refer to as unfunded. So being consistent for this year would be my recommendation. I don't know if you can massage that in the, before we release that. But that would be where I would say, and you know, whether we have to go in and, and we are going to go into recess for our closed session. So we do have an opportunity. If there needs to be some changes in drafts that want to come back to this, we could go in. If there's consensus on the board to make sure that the draft looks like we want, we could go in and do our other action and then come back and make a motion to release it with those changes, if that's what the board wants to do. But so we do have, we have a lot of flexibility this morning and the fact that we're going to be bouncing between meetings. So if that's a staff direction that the majority of the board agrees to, so be it. If it needs to be something we all actually see, we have time to do that as well. So with that, Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I think I have a simpler question and that is, what is the obligation from a schedule point of view that we have to have this out today?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Atkins, we do not have to have this out today. We're just reducing the amount of time the cities and townships have to get this on an agenda for them, for their meetings to get the resolution of support back to us. So we generally try to give them roughly six weeks just with their schedules. So if we were to come back, I, I think that would be sufficient. We have released in October before when we've, we've waited to do so due to some changes. So that's not unusual. I will say, Mr. Chair, we would probably need a little bit more time. This is a pretty expansive document and I would want to make sure all of our numbers are correct. And to make a number of changes across spreadsheets, I'm not sure we could do in an hour or so. I don't, I would rather not have a mistake.
And I, and my response on staff on that is that we don't meet as a county board until when?
Seven.
The seventh. So that's our next, so we have a couple of weeks. So I just wanted to make sure that that was enough appropriate, appropriate time. Knowing that we're looking to the, around Thanksgiving by the time we would have those comments in there. My other question with that would be, and this is really the county manager and finance. While that, do we anticipate, because our budget meeting would be related to some of these CIP changes would potentially be happening while it is still out for comment. Is that, does that create conflict as a result?
Mr. Chair, say that again. What are you worried, what is your concern?
So if we are out six weeks, we're basically to right before Thanksgiving. It was in that month of November when we were looking to go in and see some of those staff recommendations on changes to the CIP. And that would be happening concurrent to public comment period. So we would be potentially making changes while still not being able to get the comments from the public yet. And I didn't know if that changes that timeline, which we certainly don't have to approve the CIP till the last meeting of December. So we do have, but, but I would hate to go and see that we are starting to make changes to a CIP without having the fair opportunity of public comment that we're having this conversation on.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I do think that it would make it a little bit tight if we don't release it until the 7th of October. I mean, it can be done. We were planning to come back to you November 7th.
November 6th.
6th, November 6th, the first meeting in November to talk more about, you know, here's what we heard from cities and that's where we anticipate getting more changes. So I think it, it might be tough to, to wait that long. I do think, I mean, I think a potential way to sort of thread the needle here is to go back to what you saw in August, just change back to unfunded, the things that we moved out. If you're comfortable with the first list that just is name changes, perhaps we could leave those in. But to release it with that change, that would be a way to perhaps thread the needle that adds everything back in. As the chair suggested, we would just list them as unfunded if we can see that as of today, we will not have money for that in that year. We'd list them as unfunded, but leave them in and, and then allow you to have more discussion about whether or not there's, you want to pursue other funding options or whether or not you want to leave it as unfunded in November.
I, I don't see an issue with that, but I'll go to Commissioner Atkins. I know that you were, you have the greatest concern on this, so.
Well, Ms. Chair, and I'm, I'm a little taken aback that I'm alone.
No, you're not.
You know, I mean, we've had this same conversation about other topics so many times. About how we don't take this kind of action without having an opportunity to have heard about it in committee. And ask the, I mean, I didn't, I don't know, maybe Commissioner Drosty's had a chance to visit with Councilman Murphy and Mayor Dietrich about the pedestrian safety issue at 55 and, and Argenta, but I haven't.
But that moves it all back.
And so in an ideal situation, we would have had these changes back when we talked about it in August. In a less ideal, we would have had these changes in between August 19th and today, September 23rd.
Last week.
We haven't had that chance. So unless, and I just, I'm just so deeply disappointed that we're being placed in a position where now we have to choose to have either a bad outcome today or a bad process. And I think the best of the possibilities is probably what you've suggested. We, we keep, or what county manager well suggested. We keep it in the fashion that it was brought to us before. We note that some projects are, you know, just tell them what's going on. Say, hey, we were, we didn't know what was going on for a while. We just discovered last week. We've got a $10 million deficit. And let them also comment on whether they think we ought to increase the sales and use tax to fund it, rather than take out those projects. I'm going to take a, a little bit of a leap here because part of the reason, you guys, I feel so strongly about this. I know four families that have had pedestrian fatalities. One of them was in my previous district. We went to the state, we were able to, with Representative Halverson's assistance. But you don't just remove projects that benefit pedestrian safety without it coming for a full, full discussion. And so, you know, I don't want to name their names. I literally keep their names with me. I know their names. I know their families. And so if I, you know, if it seems like I'm a little emotional about this, you're right, I am. But I, yeah, I think doing it in that fashion, releasing it, it's not great and it shouldn't happen ever again.
Yeah.
Commissioner Holberg, then Commissioner Halverson.
I'm, I'm just wait a second here. Commissioner Workman was way at the end. Yeah. I don't know if you still want to. Commissioner Workman, Holberg, Halverson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just so you know, I had a debate, internal debate on whether or not I should even say anything. Because I'm not exactly politically correct all the time. But this is a draft. It's not set in stone. It's a draft. And if someone, a city, isn't happy or a constituent from whatever district isn't happy, they'll say so. And then we can either acknowledge it, make adjustments or do whatever it is we have to do. I am perfectly fine with the way it looks right now and the way, and all the work that staff has put into it. I have no issues with it because it is a draft. And I have intersections in my district that don't even connect to a county road that have had fatalities. So I'm sorry those things happen, but, but you know, maybe if people paid more attention while they were driving, they wouldn't. And you keep bringing up the sales and use tax and I will never vote to increase it. Now, if the state wants to take that on and do that, then have at it. But I too am also tired of defending our position. And George explained very well what would happen if we did that. And we don't need to have that kind of surplus. So I say we release it as is if, and wait or continue to have conversations while the draft plan is out, that's fine. But let it go. These are the experts, not us. We all have our pet projects in our districts. And that's what this is beginning to sound like. So I say, let it go as it is, let people comment. And we can address the comments after the time is done for public comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman.
And I better stop.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman.
To that point, Ms. Chair, not one of these projects is in my district, Commissioner Workman. Not one.
Well, not more.
No, not any, not any of the projects that have been altered since August 19th is, is one that I've raised a point about. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. So noted. Commissioner Holberg, then Halverson.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. My apologies, apologies for speaking twice and Erin came to the stand. And maybe she was going to make this point as well. Just going back to the August document would not include all of the changes that we agreed to or told them to do up until this point. So we would lose that work product as well. So I, it seems like a simple solution, but it might actually throw us farther off track than said, I mean, I, I think the cities need at least six weeks. This, they have to figure out how their cost shares and everything would interact with their budgets as well. I don't know if there's a way to put a introductory warning or paragraph saying that this is a draft, budgets are changing. You know, we expect there to be additional changes as a result or, I mean, I, we're kind of in a sticky situation. But all things being considered, I think we should put it out. Plus, I think that's what I told them yesterday, the state and the county.
I have a, I have a solution. But you have the floor, then I'll come with a.
Yeah, thank you. And I think that, you know, that is a good point that some work was done, you know, prior to, to August 19th. And I think you're, you're putting something together, so I'm not going to preempt too much. But you know, my first question was going to be with regard to scheduling notice that the cities needs. Can they, you know, get a pre-letter to say, this is going to be in your hands on such and such a date? So that they can get the scheduling done for their public meeting? And then also anticipate when it'll be in their hands for analysis so that we can have the time to do the work? So that's one question. And then my other question was, you know, if, if it does go out, you know, there's been some conversation about having it go out, having these projects say unfunded, that there should be some narrative involved. These projects that were pulled since, or changed since August 19th without board discussion could maybe be highlighted and there could be some narrative about, we found this $10 million hole. So, and could we add some narrative around that for our cities? But those are just two what ifs and I'm going to.
All right. So thank you, Commissioner Halverson. I'm just trying to crunch some numbers and some thoughts on here. And just throw this out here for a second. If we would propose to actually bring this back to the board meeting on the 7th of October and release it on the 7th of October, that gives staff the appropriate time to be able to address a lot of what we talked about and make sure that we clean up language, clean up the, the things that we already agreed upon on the 19th, but also go and address some of the concerns of the board here, release at the board meeting on the 7th of October. If we do not go and have that conversation on the 4th of November, when the GGP there and potentially schedule an, an additional GGP on the 18th of November, that goes in. And that is only a, a board and regional rail. So that's going to be an earlier day regard. So we actually have enough time to do an additional, to do two GGPs and, or it could be a budget workshop for all that matters. But something on the Tuesday, the 18th doesn't give you exactly six weeks to release, but it gives you five plus. And with the fact that, with the exception of our small cities and townships, all of the larger cities meet at least twice a month. So they would have ample time within that schedule to be able to put something on. And maybe we could give a courtesy of a heads up. I've already done that with my townships to let them know that there's going to be a CIP and there'll be road projects that might be coming up. So I've already sent them an email to all of the clerks and board chairs, giving them a heads up of a CIP as I do each and every year. So it isn't six, but it is five. And it allows the board to not get ahead of public comment, but also give the ample time for staff to go and address the concerns of today. Thoughts on that from my colleagues if we could make that work.
Mr. Chair, this is, this is what I was thinking all along, the idea of tabling this today. And I like that you've given us the, the timeline so that there's a comfort level that there is sufficient time. And not, we're not going to be rushed. The cities are not going to be rushed. They're going to be, we're going to make sure that they're aware that there were concerns that did come. And you did it, I want to thank you for the work that you did do and let them know that we had, we needed more time for the board to have this conversation. So I appreciate your timeline, Mr. Chair, and it gives everybody a chance to be on board with the CIP.
As tabling is a non-debatable motion, I don't want to quite take a motion yet on this, but make sure that people have their voice heard. But that is something we could consider. Does somebody have something they feel they need to say about that? I'm looking around. If not, I would encourage one of my colleagues to vote, move to table it with the direction that we've had in the discussion today. But before that, I'm not going to take a second because I have Erin who has to say a few things.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner. I just wanted to clarify, I was doing a phone to a friend while I was sitting down and I was confusing some projects. I thought Commissioner Atkins was referring to the grade separation of 55 and 63. When in fact, he was referring to the pedestrian underpass. And so that was pushed out to line up with the Greenway construction, which is anticipated to occur in 31. So design is still ongoing for that project. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I appreciate that. I think that's a good example of how we're trying to go in and make sausage in, in live time. And being able to take the step back and get this thing, these things figured out really is an appropriate way to do that. So.
Mr. Chair.
So we have a.
I will make a motion to, but before I make that motion, I just want to say I really appreciate the conversation that we've had here. And I appreciate the work that staff has done. I feel much more comfortable about being able to have time for the dialogue and then bring it before the county board when we know that it is at least everyone has had a chance to be able to look at it. With that, I will make a motion to table.
Is it moved to table until the next regularly scheduled board meeting? Is there a second to that? Second by Commissioner Halverson. Once again, that is a non-debatable motion. With that, please call the roll.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Workman?
No.
Commissioner Drosty?
No.
Commissioner Holberg?
No.
Commissioner Slavik?
Yes.
Commissioner Halverson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamon-Roy?
Yes.
That motion does carry to be tabled till the 7th of October. All right. Wow. So that 10 minute conversation took us about an hour. So with that, we will move on to, just to walk through once again, our item is a recommendation to go into a closed session. We will do is we'll make the motion to go into that. Then we will move to inter-agency announcements and reports, the county manager report. Then we will go into recess. Then we will do the regional rail. And then we will go into the closed session. So walking through that, item 13.1 is an action item. through that, item thirteen point one is an action item by the sheriff to go into a closed executive session, go to county board of commissioner, safety training. Is there a motion to that extent?
So moved.
Commissioner Halverson is first, and Commissioner Hayman Rowland was the second. I'll, please, call the roll.
Commissioner Workman?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosty?
Yes.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Slavitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Halverson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayman Rowland?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. And next, we're going to go on to inter-agency announcements and reports and commissioner updates. We start with the Association of Minnesota Counties.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I sent out the summary to all of the commissioners.
We also had the policy committee where we started formulating our, our policy agendas for, for the next legislative year. I will start by saying that general government where I serve in usually deals with property taxes and a number of other fund money issues. And this year, actually, for the first time, chose instead to do its legislative priority is really to fix the, fix the technology, and fix our state systems that are not working right. I think that those who were in attendance got to see a great presentation by Dakota and Scott Community Services of kind of a live action on literally the green screens and DOS systems that we have as, as state systems and eligibility, and why that is truly costing the taxpayers millions of dollars each and every year. We, so we realize that even though we've received a lot of dollars to do that part in there, if the state had to do eligibility instead of counties, I guarantee you this would have been done years ago, and it would have been fixed right. But for that, this is the part that is, that brings us back. And when we talk about our high taxes and our high levy, this is one of the major things that goes in, that we have no control at. It wasn't a shift and a cut from the last year or two. This is something that's been going on since the eighties. I think one of the most glaring parts to me was when we saw that, literally when you input a new birth, a new child, you have to go in and say, is that new baby, are they married? Are they, have they served in the military service? On every single one of those things, and there's, there's not a way to just skip those questions. You have to answer each and every one of those questions. And when we look at our staff time, which is so valuable, that's what they're doing there. So not only was that a human services and social services priority at AMC, it was also a priority for the tax committee, basically. And I will also say that we had some amazing presentations on both some federal updates, as well as the, we had a legislator panel that was, that was just eye-opening in terms of their conversations on what they can do together. I think we, we certainly had champions of counties that were on the panel, and I think that makes a world of difference. But what they are able to do, these were some more senior tenured members to hopefully educate the other members of the legislature on some of these big issues that face counties. So I thought it was a great conference and a great step into addressing the issues that we need to moving forward. But that will go to Metropolitan Emergency Services Board.
Yes. I'll mention, we had a meeting on Friday. Key item on the meeting, we hired a vendor to do the mapping for schools throughout the state, six of our seven regions. It's a little over twenty-four hundred schools, and the deadlines by June of twenty-twenty-six. And just for the public on mapping, what it means is, once a school is mapped, some of them are acre, could be two, five acre with fields, that the nine-one-one caller will get the location on their complex of where the emergency is, whether it's medical or fire. So to cut the response times, legislature allocated seven million and twenty-two-four, and this will be a great thing once it's finished.
Okay. Thank you. Minnesota Inter-County Association.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We met last week, and did some pre-session planning, trying to do some anticipating of, of what we might see. One of the major topics of conversation, again, was the IT modernization issue, and digging in deeper to what has been spent at the state and what hasn't. And the appropriation, hundreds of millions of dollars have gone to DHS and haven't come back out. And so we're talking a bit about what kind of response counties are going to have in the next legislative session to bake in some accountability, bake in some backstops of if certain actions aren't taken by a certain time, that maybe those dollars revert back to counties, and we start building our own solutions. So, because right now, it is completely out of the hands of counties. It is exclusively in the hands of DHS, and we need to be at the table in a bigger way. Also, we're working to anticipate what is going to happen next year, as more people become unchurled, as pressures to our county budgets around SNAP build. So counties are feeling it acutely. I think that's, that's not a big secret. So, anything to add, Commissioner Drosty, that I missed?
Good. All right. With that, we'll move on to the Metropolitan Mosquito Control District Commission.
Well, they should be less annoying. But the ticks have woken up from slumber and are back out. And so check yourselves when you come inside. But we do have an executive board meeting tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Now we will move to National Association of Counties, NACO. Anything? Transportation Advisory Board, Commissioner Holberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The last tab meeting last week was pretty much just informational items, but there was a meeting yesterday where they rolled out kind of the first round of how scoring would occur, in order to, I don't know, I'm going to get in trouble, so I'm not going to say what I think. But they are proposing that twenty-five, or twenty percent of the points on all projects across the board be related to what historically has been referred to as DEI. They've renamed it to some community conversations, I think. And then in addition, within that scoring category, if a project scored high on the three subcategories, they'd be guaranteed funding for the project, no matter how they scored on the rest of the matrix. There was some consternation around that proposal, so now we're starting to kind of see the meat on the bones, if you will, of how it actually, these different categories would be funded, and stay tuned. But as I stated yesterday at State of the County, the next couple months are going to be really imperative that we stay on top of this and engage our partners. And then also, MINDOT has released their Minnesota Go. I don't know if we can do a social media post or whatever, but it's a process where MINDOT's trying to gather feedback from across the state as to what the transportation system should look like moving forward. And again, if our region fails to participate in that input process, it will likely be detrimental to our county.
All right. Anything further? With that, we move on to Vermillion River Watershed Joint Police Board.
Quickly, thank you. We have a meeting on Thursday, and we have a tour Thursday morning, visiting four locations with completed projects.
I'll be there. Sounds good. Workforce Development Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our twenty-twenty-five Dakota-Scott Workforce Development Board award celebration will be at the Playworks Link Event Center. It will be held on December the tenth from eight-thirty to ten, and deadline for nominations is October thirty-first. So it's coming up. The keynote for the event will be a speaker on generational differences. So, that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll move to others. Any other things that anyone had? Commissioner Halverson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say briefly, congratulations for the State of the County event last night. And Heidi might be covering this as well, but a couple things that I noted while I was in the audience is the great story that we're telling in terms of our ability to partnership and, and innovate and leverage resources. It was impressive. The other thing that I was really struck by, and I think about this all the time when it comes to the Dakota County Board, is how much experience and knowledge there is among the seven folks here, and the fact that, and thank you for kind of sharing the spotlight, and kind of giving everybody a chance to share what, you know, things that are important to each one of us. And, but the expertise was, you know, I think is kind of unmatched, and it was impressive to me, so it stood out. The other thing I just wanted to congratulate is our communication staff. I think that they had some technical bugs that honestly, from an audience member's standpoint, I didn't notice, which is a great success. And I really thought that the messaging was well done. So just going to say congratulations all around. I really walked out of that feeling proud, and got some really great feedback from the business community and our government partners. So thanks. That's all.
And others, I will just say that Dakota nine-one-one, which I serve as the county representative on it, we did meet for our quarterly meeting last week. We talked actually about the school mapping that Commissioner Drosty shared with, and are working on some of our, we actually approved some of the labor contracts, and we're working on some of the wage study, as we got a great report from the State of the County yesterday from the executive director of Dakota nine-one-one on, on many of those things. So, and with that, we'll move on to the county manager report.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, I don't have much to say today, other than we're busy full-time on budget, as you've seen, notwithstanding a little bit of a messy conversation here. I've been very proud of our board, sorry, well, I have been bored of our board, and I've been proud of staff and how much work they've put into this, and, and we're, we can see the finish line up ahead. So thank you.
Thank you, county manager. And before we go into recess, usually I do my day of the, day of the, what's it?
What's the day today?
There is nothing good that I could find a correlation between Dakota County and this. But I just wanted to just get out there, enjoy the fall, and all we have to offer in Dakota County. But, you know, before we, I actually was intending to start our board meeting this way, which is, but I got a little, with all the commotion that was going in there, I kind of lost track of it. But, you know, so since we did meet last, we had another political assassination. And I think that it's, we need to be able to use our voices, as all of us have, as was noted, many years of elected experience, and, and we are very passionate people. One of my favorite things, what all six of you up here, is how much passion and care you have for the issues that are most important to you. And frankly, as you can even saw up here today, those are not always the same issues, depending on which one of us opens up their mouth at that given time. And what is such amazing about this country, and about what we have here, is that we can go in and say, and be as passionate and shout from the rooftops about what we believe in. And we have that freedom and that right. And no one deserves to be able to lose their life over something like that. So before we leave and take recess, I do want to just, unfortunately, it feels like almost every meeting we've had to have a moment of silence for something, but I think it's very important, just in, in this, to offer a moment of silence for the Kirk family as well for this one here. So would you please join me in that? Thank you very much. And, and thank you for our very quick meeting that has taken us almost an hour and a half, two hours, but you know what? We got good stuff done with that. And we are going to go into a closed session. We'll recess for that part, but I just want to remind everyone that the next regularly scheduled board meeting of the Dakota County Board Commissioners is October seventh, two thousand twenty-five, here in the boardroom in Hastings. And with that, I will go and declare us in recess.